Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Councilmember Ben Wolkowitz is absent. Excuse please, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, beautiful, liberty, and justice for all.
May I have a motion for the executive minutes of July 23rd, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of July 23rd, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all to our slightly earlier start. I apologize for being here a little late on our early start. We had a relatively light executive agenda, but we knew we had a heavy regular agenda, so we moved it up a little bit. And then we went a little bit past our 7:30 stop on the executive, so I apologize. Couple of things going on. This past Saturday, I tried to launch what I'm calling a talk in the park, as opposed to a walk in the park. And the concept is periodically setting myself up in various places around town to invite residents to come and ask questions, share ideas, or whatever you want to do. And one of the things we know we can't control as elected officials is the weather. So first one got rained out. I am looking to hopefully do it this Saturday, but I will confirm that by Wednesday. So keep an eye on social media, because that's the way we'll push out the announcement. As bad as weekend weather has been, we had a little break in bad weather two weeks ago on Saturday for Touch a Truck, which was held at the library in the YMCA. This was by the Friends of the Madison Public Library. Over 1,200 tickets were sold. They raised $22,000. Fun was had by children of all ages. And in addition to all the great trucks that our local contractors had there and gave up their time, we also had the borough well represented by our police, fire, electric, and DPW. And to recognize the Employee of the Month for August is firefighter Jack Dunn of the Fire Department for his commitment and dedication in taking on and completing special projects in the Fire Department, such as repairing equipment on apparatus, building training props, and making new shoring panels for the trench rescue team. So we thank firefighter Jack Dunn for his extra effort on behalf of all the residents. And if you see him, please congratulate him on being the Employee of the Month of August. And as a reminder for our schedule for the summer, this is our only August meeting. We will not have a second August one. And our next meeting will be Wednesday, September 12th, as Rosh Hashanah falls on the Monday. So we will be back here on a Wednesday. And now moving to reports from committees. Health, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Health Department has given final approval for the opening of the Bottle Hill Restaurant and Tavern. The nursing supervisor is making plans for flu clinic updates this fall. Next we have free yoga classes have begun at the Madison Pool. They are being taught by Brendan Gibbons with all levels welcome. The remaining dates are August 21st and the 28th, and they begin at 2:30 PM. The Hope One Van was also at the Madison Pool on August 6th. This mobile recovery access system offers critical support for persons struggling with addiction and provides information on preventing overdoses and deaths. Narcan training and kits are provided to family members and friends of those suffering with opiate addiction. Also a reminder, August is National Immunization Awareness Month. The Health Department reminds residents, adults, and children to check their vaccination status. For more information on this important topic, please call the Health Department at 973-593-3079. And finally, an ID check campaign to educate all alcohol retailers on how to correctly proof and check IDs regardless of state will be taking place before the end of this summer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Mechanics Department, they repaired Waverly Place clock again, and I hope it keeps on working. They serviced and repaired Police Department vehicles. They're actually getting ready and repairing the leaf loaders, because we'll be starting those, the use of those probably in September or October. The Electric Department needed light bars on both of their trucks. Parks Department is still working on the recreational fields. They're watering, I don't know why, they're watering the flower baskets, because I don't think that they need them right now, but it's in this report. And one of the things that they do is that they do collect the recycling and the yard misses, yard waste misses, which seems to be pretty predominant right now, so we're going to try and work on that. The Roads Department is doing paver repairs. They're still delivering mulch to residents. They're putting up signs. They're repairing potholes. And one of the other things they do is they are responsible for picking up the white goods and the appliance pickups on the Fridays. Sewer Department was busy with emergency flood issues due to the heavy rain, and they were investigating residential sewage blockup calls. And they continued to do a day-to-day operation and maintenance of all the lift stations. There's been lots of miscellaneous markouts for PSE and G as well. This is from the Engineering Department. I'm going to make it a little bit short. Sorry, Buck. I'm not going to read the whole thing, because you're going to be seeing a presentation that's going to be, a lot of this is going to be explained. But the 2018 road reconstruction work by Cefeli and Sons were completed. The final milling and paving work on their contract, the signage and striping work will be scheduled for completion this month. We're going to talk in a little while about what has been done, and you'll see a small presentation. There's a pre-construction meeting to be held on August 23rd for the 2018 sewer video and assessment work. There's also a pre-bid meeting for Well AB Treatment Plant improvements. That's going to be scheduled in August. Plan and specifications for the Greenwood Avenue Reconstruction North will be submitted to review to NJ DOT Local Aid. Under the funding program requirements, this month will be done. The land surveys for 2019 road improvements have been completing, allowing the staff to begin drafting the reconstruction work for the full budget cycle. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Finance Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, each borough department received their 2019 budget forms and instructions. So today, the budget process for 2019 begins. It's pretty amazing. Also, today, tax bills were mailed out. Property owners will receive a grace period for payment until Monday, September 10th. As required by state law, payments that are not made by September 10th will be subject to interest back to August 1st. An orange flyer, this is it, is included with every bill explaining this. The tax collector also included small stickers that residents can place on their calendar to remind them of the quarterly tax payments. In addition, the annual one-sheet budget flyer was included in the tax bills as well. You can see it's on the outside on a poster board. I'm happy to report that the overall tax rate, which includes the municipal, school district, and county, went up by less than 8%. So a home that paid $10,000 property taxes last year will pay just $80 more this year. The budget flyer also highlights the following. The borough is committing $6.2 million in capital in 2018, and over $28 million in the next five years on roads, utilities, and critical infrastructure. New construction in the town will contribute over $125,000 in additional tax revenue in this year's budget. And that's how we were able to keep the municipal tax rate so low. The budget includes a very small 1% increase in spending, and the budget includes an extension of $1.5 million electric utility for another year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's finally here, August 13th, and the summer recess. I'm sure everyone has a long list of things to keep them occupied over the next couple of weeks, but council fans, do not despair. We will be back in our seats on September 4th. The downtown is quite busy this summer with the farmer's market and the concert series. Don't worry if you're trying to follow the keto diet. We have two meat purveyors at the market, and they're both very good. And if you're feeling decadent, have the artisanal ice cream sandwich. Now, this ice cream sandwich is an unbelievable $8. I'm going back to buy more. It was that good. Central and Main has been doing well, but the big news is, poor Herbie's, now Bottle Hill Tavern, is open for business. It's completely renovated, but that famous dressing is still on the menu. The Senior Center Advisory Committee has regrouped and is focusing on presentations geared towards seniors, as well as taking presentations to where the seniors are. In September, they will be partnering with the Police Department on a program on how to avoid being scammed or fished. Recreation, we're in a lull between summer and fall programs, but as you'll hear later, the Little League Fields are going to receive a much-needed resurfacing. Community Garden is growing like a weed and donating produce to the Community Soup Kitchen. They donate over a ton of produce every year to the Community Soup Kitchen. And finally, for all you New York baseball fans, today is the start of the Subway Series. And I was going to update you on what the score was.
Don't do that.
But I can't, I can't get it. I wouldn't be the final score. I can't, I can't get my Wi-Fi to work, so we're going to have to keep this meeting short, so we can all get home and watch the end of the game.
Thank you. With sports betting now legal in New Jersey, if you could give me the final score, I'll, sorry. Moving on to utilities and public safety, Mr. Hoover.
Yeah, I will talk about public safety first. Talk about the Fire Department. They had a total of 103 calls this month, this past period, 15 general alarms, 20 still alarms, 32 investigations, and 36 medical calls. They also had 57 fire prevention inspections that they did, and 31 resale smoke/CO inspections were completed. And they also wanted to congratulate firefighter Dave Carey, who retired after 25 years of service in the division, and wish them, him and his wife, the best of luck and health going forward. The last thing on the Fire Department is, they need volunteers, okay? And I suggested that you contact www.madisonfd.com if you're interested in volunteering. That's great. For the Police Department, only two items, and both personnel items. As a matter of fact, patrolman Ryan Dunn and patrolman Julian Morales completed a rigorous selection and testing process for the Morris County Sheriff's Emergency Response Team, also known as CERT/SWAT. Out of 35 Morris County Police Officers who tested for the team, only five passed, and we had two of them. So that's really great. July 23rd, Thomas Downs was appointed as Class II Special Police Officer in the Madison Police Department. Officer Downs retired from Harding Township, and he will be working over at the junior school, is my understanding, okay? That's all for public safety. For the Water Department, the department is working closely with PSE and G on Greenwood Avenue and Central Avenue, as you can imagine. Paving on several streets has been completed, and the Water Department was on hand to make sure that none of the operating main valves were paved over. Thought that was a good idea. A water main leak at 318 Main Street condo association was shut down and inspected by the Water Department while the association contracted and made the necessary repairs. And they assisted with locating fire lines and domestic operating valves for Building 5 at Rolle Farms. The Electric Department, the 19 Greenwood Avenue commercial building is complete. Transformer work, wired CTs, and riser poles have been completed. They're putting up a rubber hose on the primary wire that runs down Greenwood Avenue so that the contractors can work on the building. On Monday, July 23rd, there was a power outage on Lathrop Avenue. A wet pine tree branch was rubbing on the primary wires, and that was quickly repaired. On July 25th, there was another power outage due to a lightning hit. We are continuing to work with Luanaque Way for Atlantic Health Primary Service, and we have all the poles in place and trees are trimmed. We are now hanging, we can now hang the rollers and ropes for the next phase of pulling wire in. A car hit a pole on Park Avenue between South Street and Kinney Street. They had to replace the pole and transfer all the service and transformer to the new pole. On August 4th, they sent our standby crew to help JCPN, with some service work that was damaged by the storm in Morristown. The crew finished up Main Street with replacing the streetlights from HPS High Powered Sodium to LED Light-A-Meeting Diode, starting to put them up on Madison Avenue, too. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to follow up on your announcement of Dave Carey's retirement, I had the honor to present him with a Borough Medallion. And typical of Dave Carey, he wanted a very low-key thing, just coffee and donuts with the crew on the morning of his last day, and a sign of a truly dedicated firefighter, because firefighters, like anyone else in public safety, just go out and do the job and don't expect "thank you." And so, and Dave, I recognize him not only for his 25 years with our Fire Department, but his dedication to the American Legion, most recently as a commander, and his leadership and comments he has made on Veterans Day, Memorial Day, truly on spot. He and his wife are heading to Virginia, so they are not just retiring from their respective jobs, but retiring from Madison, but they will be back to visit. Any communications or petitions?
Unreceived, Mayor.
Okay, this is our first of two invitations for discussion. This is limited to items on the agenda, which include our State of the School Board of Education presentation from Superintendent Mark Schwartz, road construction update, and also proposed dog park. Or you can comment on any of the resolutions. I'll go through those very quickly right now, so you're also aware of those when we get to the consent agenda. If you want to comment and comment on other topics, we'll have a second comment period later in the meeting. Resolutions, Resolution 226, Resolution Madison requesting the Director of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue of budget for the year 2018. And this is because we received a grant and need to make an adjustment of $2,000, which is good news. Resolution 227 is, Rolle Farms run on November 11th, and this was also, to clarify, previously had been run by the Rosati Runners, it's going to be run by Barwick Group. 228 is approving raffle license for the Women's National Farm and Garden Association. 229 is giving permission for Turn the Town Teal, tying ribbons around trees from September 1 through the 30th in support of Campaign to Fight Ovarian Cancer. Resolution 230 is renewing liquor license. This is a pocket license that is held by Shaw Traders, which means it is not being used at any current location, but is kept active by payment of fees. 231, special permit for using some parking spaces for Tori J Sabatini PTO fundraiser that's going to be at the ambulance corps. 232 is updating the borough's Microsoft Office to 2016, and it's under state contract, and this is for the amount of $37,420. Resolution 233 is raffle licenses for the Madison High School PTSO. Resolution 234 proclaiming Saturday, October 6th, as Bottle Hill Day, and also authorizing the Beer Garden. So don't forget to put October 6th, first Saturday as always, on your calendar. And, all right. Resolution 235 approving temporary signs for the Madison Community Pool to go up from August 14th to September 4th, advertising their 50th anniversary family fun party over Labor Day weekends. Mark that on your calendars. And Resolution 236, amending professional services contract with Clark, Keaton, Hints. They are the architects doing design work on rehabilitation of this building. And there's additional engineering work that is required, primarily related to the plaza out front, which will include putting heating underneath the slabs, so it'll be much safer in the winter months. So those are resolutions. You may comment on any of those resolutions or the three agenda items. If you wish to comment on those, please step forward, state your name, your address, the agenda item, and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. I will give you a one-minute grace period, but while I ask you to stop at four minutes. Anyone wishing to comment on those topics, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to agenda discussions. And the first one is our Board of Education presentation from Mark Schwartz, our Superintendent of Schools, and this is part of our working together, borough as a municipality and the school board and the school district, doing more and more and trying to get the word out on all the great things we're helping in schools. This presentation in a longer form had already been done to the Board of Education. We're now going to make it available to our audience here, and obviously online and on the cable networks. I want to point out that, to emphasize, we've been doing quite a bit together over the years. We've had extensive lists of shared services. And if you were following the report released by Senate President Steve Sweeney, on that list is requiring every town to have a municipal and school shared services committee. We established ours 13 years ago, which is 91 years in dog years. My first year on the council, so I'm proud that we've been working for 13-plus years. We didn't need a committee to work together, but that strengthened it. So with that, it's all yours, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm presuming it would be preferable for me to speak with the microphone? Is that correct?
Yes.
So I believe it's right here?
I think I left one right on the...
Yeah. Thank you very much. If it pleases everyone, I'd be happy, I prefer to stand over here. The presentation that I'm going to give has quite a bit of data in it, and I'd like to be able to see the presentation as I speak, and I also don't like to hold still. So this is, I got a little freer and less likely to knock things over over here. So first of all, I want to thank the Borough Council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Burnett, Mrs. Osborne, Mr. Jacoby, for having me here tonight, and thank you, members of the public, for taking the time to come out. I'm presuming that you all came for this presentation specifically. So I have been, upon arriving this evening, I have been encouraged time and time again to be as brief as possible, but that's not, out of disrespect to the Board of Education or to our schools. If you haven't had a chance to preview the presentation online, you'll know that it's actually a 50-slide PowerPoint presentation, and it is very, very data-rich. So I encourage everyone, and I want to start the presentation by letting everyone know that it is currently posted on our district website under News. If you go down to the State of the Schools address, you can access the slideshow. So if you want to give any of these slides a deeper dive in terms of the data that's provided, please feel free to do so. Additionally, I've also provided a screencast version of this presentation. So basically, that's me at a computer, using a mouse to point to the data and speaking into, and creating a recording on my screen. So that's only about 40 minutes, but of course, you know, I was pretty disciplined in my office, so I was able to do that pretty quickly. So anything that I say here today, if it lacks any kind of an explanation, if the acronyms are flying too fast, if we move too fast through the PowerPoints, by all means, I'd be happy to take your questions afterwards, but it is not lost. You can find it, and you can hear some further commentary on it online if you so choose or so desire. So I'm going to start, because I am going to, I am going to try to move as quickly as possible through the presentation for the, out of respect for everyone's time, and I know there's other business to attend to here as well. But in terms of the presentation, I'm going to just basically give you a basic introduction and a summary, and that is that the genesis of this presentation came really from my entry to the district about a year ago. Actually, my first official day in Madison was August 14th, 2017. So this is, we are exactly on my 365th day in district. So that's pretty awesome. And, thank you very much. But it has been an absolute pleasure to be here. And one of the biggest challenges that I found when I got here is that, just due to a great deal of transition in the schools, combined with some changes in Madison's placement and some media rankings about schools, had caused some people to question what the quality of our schools were. And so when I came here, I found that we had a wide variety of opinions, but they ranged from opinions that our schools were the absolute best that you could find anywhere, let alone just New Jersey, to opinions that our schools weren't that great and that they were overrated. And it was interesting to find that I found such a range of responses, and yet, when I drilled down, everybody had so many positive things to say about our schools, and then, and everybody had some sort of a suggestion. And what was interesting to me is, that sounds like any organization out there today. Anyone has their accolades and their strengths, and anyone has their areas for improvement. So over the course of the year, I set out to really understand what was going on in our community and in our schools, to get the most accurate picture regarding what our current reality is in our schools. As we seek to go forth and be the absolute best school district we can possibly be, and a preeminent school district in the nation, world even, we need to first start with knowing where we stand, so that we can protect our strengths, enhance our strengths, identify our weaknesses, and turn our weaknesses into additional strengths. So that's basically more or less what we're going to accomplish here today, is highlight all of the great things that are going in our schools, and with precision, identify the areas that we need to improve upon. And I'd be happy to take your questions at the end of the presentation. And again, I am going to try and move pretty quickly, so you can feel free to give me, if I'm losing anybody, if it's going too fast, you can feel free to give me a quick clarification handup if you need to. All right. So Michael, am I just going to advance this slide and it's going to go? There we go. So I am showing you the actual presentation from June 4th. There has been some details that have changed, but rather than have multiple versions of the official State of the Schools address, I'm presenting to you the same address that I presented on June 4th to the public in our schools. So some background, first, I thanked everyone. My team was great in helping me organize all the data that drove this presentation. I, of course, thank the Board of Education and all our school community. Of course, I have to thank my wife and kids, because I've spent a lot of time in Madison over the last year. Our mission statement, if you don't already know it, we are going to be really revisiting and reemphasizing this year. It's a great mission statement, and it is that we will inspire and challenge all students to be lifelong learners, empowered with the knowledge, skills, and character to shape their future, realize their dreams, and contribute positively to the world. We had some goals this last year. They were pretty foundational, as I said. Number one is build our foundation. The second goal, as I'm describing, was to know where we stand. Again, you have to know where you stand if you're going to chart a path forward. You could have the best map in the world, and you could know exactly where you want to go, but if you don't know where your starting point is, you don't know which way to move. So that was our goal there. And then, of course, throughout this year, we wanted to support the high achievement of all students, emphasis on the word "all," and that we want to ensure that no students are falling through the cracks, all are being supported. As I said before, the purpose of this address is to share the outcomes of Goal 2, which is to know where we stand. We want to affirm to the community of Madison that our school programs are strong, and that Madison graduates are highly competitive in college and career. We also want to explain the popular ranking systems that people speak about when they talk about the quality of schools, or the perceived quality of schools, and provide context for Madison's current ranks. And we want to identify targeted areas for improvement within our schools. So an overview of our schools, our current enrollment at the time of this presentation, and it hasn't changed much this year, is 2,532 students. We serve Madison K-12, and we serve Harding at the high school as well. For those who aren't familiar with the district factor grouping in New Jersey, there is a tiering system that helps school districts to compare themselves based on their economic factors. If any of you are interested in education research, then you probably know, you also probably just know through social observation and commentary, that the single greatest determinant of a student's future academic and career success is the income level of their parents. Therefore, when you have schools in a community where there are higher rates of affluence, those students, due to non-school factors, are inclined to do much better. Similarly, students who are in communities where parents are less educated and have less income, they are statistically less likely to be as successful in school. So the mission of public schools is to neutralize that. Our goal is to level the playing field. Our goal is to level the playing field, to say that no matter where you go to school, no matter what community you're in, no matter what your parent's background or education level is, our schools are going to give you a world-class education so that you can realize all of your dreams. So we are a district factor group of an I. That's important because when we compare ourselves to other districts and we look at our scores, it's important to keep track of the fact that we are actually as affluent as this community is. We are not in the highest affluent ranking. So frequently, we like to compare ourselves with districts such as Chatham, Mountain Lakes, Milburn. Those are districts that are in even higher tier of income. And that's important to keep in mind because often, the way that school ranking systems now work is that they take into account school districts' performances and their abilities to help students who are in subgroups that are traditionally low-performing, such as economically disadvantaged students. And districts that are J districts, they typically have such a small percentage, if a zero percentage, of students who fit this low-income category that they actually don't even, they actually can't even be reported in the rankings because their sample size is too small. So when we're comparing our school district against their district, it is not apples-to-apples. And frequently, when you're comparing the highest-performing school districts, the increments between, and I'll show you some of these increments here today, the increments between, in the rankings, they can be just a matter of a single point to make the difference of a rank. So those are important to keep in mind when we try to get a sense of how we're doing. Some of our features of our schools, though, is that we have been recognized for excellence in academics, art, athletics, sustainability. We have a highly-invested faculty. We have highly-committed principals and administrators. We have a great staff retention rate. Our graduates are accepted in the most prestigious universities in the world. We have 17 AP courses. In addition to those 17 AP courses, we offer a variety of courses for students on demand through a program called Virtual High School. So even if we don't offer an AP course, students can still take an AP course virtually and then take an AP exam. We have 54 extracurricular clubs, 28 athletic programs, 13 for boys, 14 for girls, and one co-ed. We have four world languages, Chinese, French, Italian, and Spanish. And we have music and arts programming for all students, K to 12. Some districts don't offer them for all students in all grades. Regarding our enrollment, we've seen a slight, we've seen a slow and steady increase. Our most recent enrollment report initially had us tapering off slightly. That report now indicates that we might be increasing slightly. But you'll notice that, obviously, I made sure I zeroed this out on the corner over here so you can see that, for the most part, we are within a range of a few hundred students. Divided that out by 13 grades, that's not a significant change. So we don't anticipate any significant grade swells or changes in enrollment. As I mentioned before, the difference between an I and a J district factor group is that we, as a community, have more diversity than some of those most affluent communities. We have, as you can see here, we've got about 15% ethnic minority, variety of ethnic minorities. We have about 20% of our students are classified as special education. We have a variety of students, about 10% or so, who speak a language other than English in home. And we have about 6% of our students that are economically disadvantaged. To be clear, this figure for economically disadvantaged comes from the students who enroll in our Free and Reduced Lunch program. So it is entirely plausible that we have more students who could qualify for that program. We just wouldn't know it because we only know it by them completing the paperwork. So as I mentioned before, in comparing ourselves with other districts, we tend to look at, what we're going to do is we're going to go through some data. And the data that we're going to start looking through is PARC data. For those of you who aren't familiar with PARC, PARC is an assessment that has been endorsed by the state. It was designed by a consortium. The consortium is the partnership for the Assessment of Readiness in College and Career. The PARC assessment got some bad press as it became a partisan kind of issue. And as you can see with the new governor, we're backing away from this test now. One of the virtues of PARC, though, is that it is a really well-developed test, and so the data is pretty solid coming out of it. Whether it's good for kids or not is a difficult question because I think the test was designed to test kids over way too many days. And I think that also it provides a level of discrete data that isn't fully necessary for schools to be able to monitor their own progress. But it does give us pretty accurate data, and it gives us data over the course of several years. So we're going to be showing you some data, I'm going to be showing you some data here that's going to show basically how we performed. This is where the presentation starts to get really data-heavy, so rather than bore everybody with all this, I'm going to kind of walk you through how to read this data, give you the general takeaways, and then I want to invite you, outside of this presentation, to please go to our website and view the full slideshow. So, short version is that our analysis shows that our non-disadvantaged students, so those are our students who are not in an impoverished situation in their homes, perform very, very well. We are competitive with the highest-performing districts. Our subgroup performances are very competitive in some areas and not so competitive in others. And there are schools in New Jersey that appear to have greater success with certain subgroups, and these may be districts to learn from. Again, so as to learn how to be the best Madison that we can be, the answer is not necessarily to look at the districts that aren't like Madison but are very high-performing because of economic reasons. The answer is to look at districts who are having greater success with populations more like we have here in Madison. Now, I'm going to give a little caveat. As I talk about some of these data presentations, we're going to be talking about some members of our community and some students who are members of some of these groups in our community. And we're going to be talking about students who are economically disadvantaged or low-income. We're going to be talking about students based on their ethnicity, and we're going to be talking about students based on whether they are a student with disabilities, a special needs student, or not. And sometimes, these topics make people uncomfortable because we don't want to ever stigmatize anyone. However, I contend that we need to talk about this publicly as an issue because we have an imperative to make sure that we are ensuring an equitable education for all of our students. We want our highest-achieving students to be as high-performing as they can possibly be, and we want our most struggling students to be as high-performing as they can possibly be. We want all of our students to thrive. And the reality is that there are a ton of education practices out there that we can utilize and continue to grow and expand, that we're already using in our schools, but when we maximize our potential and leverage our potential, we can see all of our students be highly successful. So there are two types of data presentations with regards to the PARC data. This is one of them. This is the other. The first is a bar graph comparison, all right? It's the same data set for each of those two slides, but it's looked at in two different ways. So this first slide here is a bar graph, and it's got clustered bars. So you'll see Madison is right here. And what this is, is it's on the 2017 PARC assessment. Our 2018 assessment data, by the way, we don't get comparative data for another several months. So we've got to work off of data that's already a year and a few months old. But Madison here, you'll see, this is comparing our economically disadvantaged students versus our non-economically disadvantaged students. And the metric over here is the percentage of students who effectively passed the test, meaning that they are considered proficient based on this assessment. They either met standards or exceeded them. And as you can see, our non-economically disadvantaged students compete with the highest-performing students in the state. So some of these other ones that are up here with us are West Windsor Plainsboro, Ridgewood. We have Princeton, that looks like, Milburn, this looks like Glen Rock, and Bernards. So these are some districts that are performing up here with us. Our economically disadvantaged students, as you see, and again, this is Language Arts, English Language Arts, you see there are students, there are some districts that are performing, we're performing far better. Our economically disadvantaged students are outperforming. But you'll also see that there are many districts where the students are outperforming ours. So for example, if you look at Fort Lee here, Fort Lee's students, their non-economically disadvantaged students are performing on par exactly with us. But their economically disadvantaged students, for whatever reason, in Fort Lee are performing far better than our students are. The next slide is a matrix that's designed to kind of show how these numbers actually play out in reality. So when you look at this side of the matrix scale, you'll see that we have our economically disadvantaged students by percentage that they're enrolled. So the state average over here has a much higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students than anybody else that's in this cluster. On this axis, the Y-axis here, we have economically disadvantaged students by percent proficient. So this is their percentage of proficiency rates. Madison's right in the middle here, and then you see the scattering of sample schools. And I didn't mention this before, but this sampling was selected because it was identified through our data analysis that these are all schools that, in one metric or another, they have a subgroup that outperforms a subgroup in Madison. So whether that be special education students, whether that be Latino students, whether that be economically disadvantaged students, every one of these school districts that's on here has a subgroup metric that outperforms us. So we purposely chose to put them up here so that we could see how we fared in their different categories. So what's interesting is you'll see here that in proficiency, you have Milburn and New Providence performing higher, their economically disadvantaged students are performing higher than ours, but they have a much lower percentage of those students in that category. Whereas you'll see down here, all the schools under this line are schools where our economically disadvantaged students outperform their economically disadvantaged students. So you'll see Westfield, Princeton, Roxbury, Somerset Hills, these are all school districts. West Windsor Plainsboro, where our economically disadvantaged students seem to be better off here. We then do the same thing with our mathematics assessment, and you'll see this story's a little different. We're a little stronger in Language Arts. Our economically disadvantaged students seem to not be performing with the rest of this cluster in math. However, there are still districts where they struggle more than we do here. You'll see that Madison on this matrix is down to the bottom left, and you'll see that there are districts who are outperforming us here up above this line. You'll see that there are still districts that we outperform, some of them very high-performing districts. Bernards, West Windsor Plainsboro, Westfield, Princeton, these are districts who are performing, their non-disadvantaged students perform along with us. But the point of this presentation here, and the point of this data study, is to recognize that there are some districts where they have even higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students that outperform ours. Look at Ridgefield over here. I'm actually, just as a side note, I'm actually doing an analysis of districts that consistently produce students who are high-performing in math, specifically among economically disadvantaged students. And I was really interested to find that there's a school, that Ridgefield keeps coming up on all these metrics, as a district, that has practices that somehow or another, despite their percentage, their over 30% of students were economically disadvantaged, they consistently produce such high results. What are they doing? We want to find out, and we're going to. This is an analysis of our students with disabilities. Interestingly, our students with disabilities are performing very, very well on the English Language Arts Assessment. And you can see, again, our line is up here, there are only a few districts that are outperforming us with special needs students. And in math, it's the same story. Our special needs students perform very well in math as compared to other districts' special needs students. And same thing, that line is high, and we are outperforming the majority of this pack. This is a breakdown of our ethnicity, of our ethnic groups. Our Asian students are highest performing, Caucasian are the green, and Hispanic is the purple. We don't have our African-American students on here because we have such a small population that it would potentially be a violation of their FERPA rights if we showed this information up here. But you can see, again, here focusing specifically on our Latin American students, who are our lowest-performing on-average subgroup. And you can see some districts, again, where we are outperforming, and again, some districts that we are not performing as well as. And then, this is the same group on mathematics, and again, the chart on mathematics as well. This is another metric that comes out of PARC. It's called student growth. It's a student growth percentile. And it basically shows how our students improve from year to year on the assessment as compared to other students throughout New Jersey. So this is our scores as of 2017. And basically, what it is, is it's basically based off of a bell curve. So 50 would be your average. If you scored a 50, you would be on par with growth in the state. And as you can see, Language Arts growth and math growth, we are above the state average in our growth. And in fact, the way that this works is, it has a strong central tendency. So the larger your number that you're working with, and this is a district-level SGP score, the larger number that you're working with, the harder it is to get away from 50. You'll notice that our English Language learners here have a growth rate of somewhere in the ballpark of 73. That is a fantastic, fantastic rate up there. So in Language Arts, our English Language learners are doing exceptionally well. You'll notice, interestingly, that our English Language learners, however, have the lowest growth on the math side. And that's an indication, one of our theories regarding that, is that although our students are improving dramatically with their language, the Common Core standards are really, are very language-heavy in math assessment. So although they might be learning the language very well, their growth is strong there, their difficulties in the language could be impeding their ability to perform well in this math assessment and to learn math. So we're investigating different strategies to better serve these students. So that's it. So if you want to dig into that data, I certainly recommend that you do. That's what the PARC shows us. That's only one year of PARC data, but that's an interesting analysis of our gaps compared to other schools' gaps. But what's really interesting is that regardless of what our gaps are, our scores are still really strong in many other metrics. So for example, when we talk about a way that we can measure the quality of our high school, SAT always comes to people's mind. Well, our SAT participation rate is very high. 89% of our students in 2017 participated in the SAT, and that's 10th and 11th graders. And if you look, this is not a full ranking system. This is just a straight SAT rank, average SAT score for all of these schools. And I coded them so that you could see, the blues are the J districts, the greens are academy schools. So these are schools that don't have, they're not traditional public schools. They can be selective in their process. So kids have to apply to these schools. And of course, one of the ways that they apply to the school and show their ability to go to the school is by their test scores in the first place. So these are not apples-to-apples comparison, yet nevertheless, you'll see that our average SAT score was higher than the average SAT score in Mountain Lakes and Glen Rock. And you'll see that we also outperformed various other magnet schools, including Somerset, Votec, Morris County School of Technology, Morris County Academy for Law and Public Safety. Rumston-Fairhaven is another district that's a J district that we outperformed. Also, I know we often look to our neighbor Chatham for a point of reference. We're only one point off of Chatham on the SAT despite the fact that they're a J and we're an I. So our students are doing very, very well on the SAT assessment. SAT performances, this just shows some historic trends. We're, seem to be advancing strongly in reading and writing. Our math scores seem to be more or less keeping with the state average. Our post-secondary enrollment rates show that our students are enrolled, most of our students go to college, and that most of them stay enrolled. These are two different data sets. This data sample was taken from the same year's data, so it's two different cohorts of students. So that accounts for the variation. You can see, depending on which cohort you're looking at, our special education students, our economically disadvantaged students, our Hispanic students, they're going to college at a comparable rate to all students in the district. This cohort seems to have a little bit of a falloff. I'm not sure what happened with them exactly, but this gives us an opportunity to take a look at how our students are doing and seeing what supports we can give students as they leave our high school and go off to college. This is a list of the colleges and universities that fell within the top 30 schools as ranked by U.S. News &amp; World Report that our students were accepted to from 2016 to 2018. And of course, you'll see some of the best universities in the world on here. Some of the absolute top, most notable universities happen to be off this list for the time being. Harvard and Cambridge are not on there. However, you'll see Yale, University of Chicago, Columbia, Penn, Duke, Johns Hopkins, Vanderbilt. These are all in the top 30 U.S. News &amp; World Report. Those two that I mentioned, Cambridge and Harvard, they are among the most exclusive schools in the world. They are very big on legacy membership and also trying to increase their diversity and recruiting through more diverse channels than traditional schools. So some of the comparisons and the rankings that we have here, we're going to take a look at a few that are of public concern to people. There are ranking systems, and there are rating systems. So the ones that we're going to look at are the NJ DOE School and District Ratings, New Jersey Monthly, which is a popular one, each.com that people talk about, School Digger, and U.S. News &amp; World Report. So the NJ DOE ranking system is a relatively new system. It takes into account PARC proficiency combined with graduation rate and chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism is defined as students who are absent more than 10% of the year. When you look at our rankings here, what you see is that Madison High School, our junior school, and our elementary schools score very, very high. We selected some districts that are kind of traditionally, traditional comparison districts for our community here, and you'll see that Madison High School edged out Livingston, Chatham, and New Providence. Summit and Milburn scored very well. Our junior school scores supreme among this group, and our elementary schools score very well also. Comparing again to high schools here, you'll see again Madison High School scoring above Parsippany, Randolph, Chatham, Montville, Parsippany Hills, and Parsippany High, Quonik. You see some of the highest scorers were Kinnellon, the Westmore schools, and Whippenny Park. New Jersey Monthly has its own ranking system. It focuses on student-teacher ratio, AP IB courses offered, the percent of students in grades 11 and 12 taking at least one test, and the percent of students 9-12 taking at least one visual performing arts course. They also focus on SAT performances. They look at percents of students scoring 3 or above on AP. They look at graduation outcomes. What's interesting is that they weight theirs, so student performance is weighted twice, and college attendance is weighted one and a half times. Additionally, this metric here is an interesting one because it doesn't take into account 10th or 9th graders who take AP classes. So districts that have high percentages of students in the lower grades taking AP classes do a lot better. So you'll see here Madison is ranked 32. This is something that many people like to talk about. I am pretty convinced that they're going to be changing their ranking system a little I am pretty convinced that they're going to be changing their ranking system a little bit, that it is the participation portion, this one here, the percent of students in grades 11 and 12 taking at least one AP exam. The way they calculate that is they actually look at the total participation rate of students taking it, and they divide it by the number of students in 11th and 12th grade. So you have students in 10th or 9th grade taking AP classes, which they are big in in Chatham, then you're going to get a huge swell in your score. We are looking, we're taking measures to try and increase the opportunities for students to take APs at the lower grades, but this should be normalized in the coming year. Niche.com is a really interesting ranking system because it focuses on, very heavily on survey responses. So I'm not telling everyone to go out to niche.com, because, I'm sorry, I didn't give this caveat. Something that has to be understood when we talk about these ranking systems, is that the goal of the, other than the DOE up to this point, really all of these, all these ranking companies, they're not ranking companies. It's not like Consumer Reports for schools. And even Consumer Reports, what is Consumer Reports? They're a media company. These are all media companies. They generate these ratings because they know they sell really well. New Jersey Monthly, their best issue is the school rankings. So they create these rankings to generate interest and to generate controversy, but they do very little to actually consult with educators when they develop their rankings. That's not to say that they're all bad, that's not to say that we should watch them. But one of the things that's really interesting is like when you think about niche.com, is they're very heavily reliant on actual surveys that people take where they actually score and rank their schools. So districts that go and where parents jump on and they give a bunch of great rankings for the schools, well, their ranking goes up. And that's great, especially for community members who are concerned about property value. If you want to see your ranking go up on niche.com, and it is getting more traction, then you can go and give positive ratings to your schools. But this whole system is designed to get people to go to these websites so to generate more traffic, so that they can generate more advertising revenues. That's an important distinction to keep in mind. So when you get into the specifics of this metric, there's a lot of ambiguity here, I won't get too deep into the details, but some of the ways that they capture this data are questionable. And you can see how we score against comparable districts, but again, this ranking system has the least of my confidence, and we have relatively few rankings. I will say, actually, you know what, I should go back. Some of these rankings are coming back out, and I should have just referenced this, if you'd like to, on your phone, you can check it right now. I believe that our niche.com ranking went up substantially with the last ranking, and I had speculated that maybe it was because I was talking about it so much in June, and they released their rankings since June. So I don't know, maybe people went on and actually rated our schools. But I want to say that we're much higher than that right now. If you want to fact-check that, feel free. School Digger is a little bit more of an interesting and valid analysis. It scores students strictly on Park scores, like the way that we were describing. It looks at a narrow sample set to judge schools. It looks at, for elementary, it only looks at grades in four or five. For juniors, for middle school, it only looks at seven and eight, and then it looks at nine to 11. And the reason that it does that is because they're trying to come up with an apples-to-apples approach for all middle schools and elementary schools. In terms of other factors, it does not take anything else into consideration except raw U.S. News &amp; World Report is one of the most interesting ones, because we used to be ranked by U.S. News &amp; World Report, and then our rankings, we no longer are ranked by them. And I got a lot of questions about that, like what the heck happened? Did they forget about us? What do we need to do? So we contacted U.S. News &amp; World Report, and we learned more about their ranking system. It's actually a four-part ranking system, and the first, and one of the most important steps is step two. So step one, overall state testing performance, our students obviously do very, very well, so there's no reason why we wouldn't be considered by them. But number two, step two, performance of underserved students. They have a metric that they require, a benchmark that they require schools to be able to reach as a minimum performance level for their economically disadvantaged students. Interestingly, we've identified that that's one of the areas that we need to work on to improve our schools. And so what happens is, if you, the smaller the percentage of economically disadvantaged students you have in your district, their logic is, the higher performing they should be, right? You don't have very many students with these challenges, so it should be easier to give them more support. Whereas a district that has a much higher percentage of students that are economically disadvantaged, it would be understandable if their percentage of proficiency rate would be a little bit lower because they would have that much more challenge. Whether that argument is valid or not, I'm not going to dig into, but suffice to say that because of the rates of economically disadvantaged students that we have here, and their proficiency rates, we did not hit, we did not meet the step-two metric. So therefore, we did not qualify for them to go to step three and step four and to be ranked. So there we are. It serves to notice, it bears noticing that Governor Livingston and New Providence also were unranked this last year, likely for a similar reason. So we're looking to get more data from them, they haven't been, they have yet to share with us really their raw data, I don't know that they will, but we're going to try and get that so we can get an idea of how close we came. So the next piece of data that's in this presentation, to kind of paint a picture of where we're at, is we did a full survey of the community, and of staff, and of students. And the student participation rate was very high, we, 78% of our kids take the test. And what was interesting is that, we're looking at the data in the presentation by the whole district, but what's interesting is that regardless of what grade you're looking at, students largely answered the same on all the, their spread was largely similar, whether it be high school students, middle school students, or elementary students. So I'm going to show all the data together, but what's interesting is, I'll do, I'll show you an analysis at the end, where we asked students at the beginning of it to identify themselves as excellent students, above-average students, average students, or below or struggling students. And you'll see this sliver right here, which is not too far off from the percentage of students who happen to just coincidentally be economically disadvantaged. But this is a portion of students who voluntarily identify themselves as below-average or struggling. And I'll show you a little bit of some of the trends that we saw in those students. On the whole, our indicators were very positive. These are some of the areas of strengths. Students feel, stated very clearly, "I feel safe while in school." "Adults care about me genuinely." "Adults inspire me to do my best." "I have an adult in the school that I trust and can speak to if I'm upset." "I'd recommend my school to others." Now, kids are kids, you're always going to get some people responding in the negative, like that's to be expected. Nevertheless, when we broke this out as an administrative team, I was really proud of my principals, when they were like, "Well, this is all great and everything, but I want to know who these kids are. Like, what is this? What is going on here? I want to find these kids, and I want to talk to them. Like, what the heck is going on? Is everything okay? What's your experience in our schools like?" Some areas that we can do a little bit better on, bullying, you'll see here, this question was phrased in the negatives, it says bullying is a problem in my school. So you'll see, most of the students said, "We disagree, we strongly disagree." But there's a pretty strong contingent here, who is still under the perception that bullying seems to be an issue in the schools. That's something we need to work on. Adults notice when students are upset and eager to help. Well, it's great that we have this big cluster here, but like, I am not very comfortable with this right here, nor is my administrative team, nor is any of our staff. We want all students to know that we are here and we're listening to them, and we're intervening to help them when they're in their time of need. Some academic indicators, students clearly feel that they've learned many new things in school, that school's preparing them for adult life, that people are there to help them if they need help. Some interesting points were academic preferences. This was when things got really interesting for me, is we asked them about a variety of learning methods, like traditional methods such as homework practice at home and direct instruction from the teacher. And these traditional methods, you'll see, look how polar opposite they are, like total U's, right? Kids either were like, "No, I hate homework," or, "Oh, homework's really good, I learn a lot from homework." And not a lot in the middle, see? And over here, direct instruction from the teacher, that was the strongest response by far. But a lot of students said, "No, no, 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 I don't want, I don't need direct instruction from the teacher, that's not what I'm looking for. I want to be hands-on." What's really interesting is that some of the things that we thought kids would be really excited about, they actually weren't very excited about. So for example, we talk about gamification in schools, like making schools, like trying to get kids to play a lot of games, especially educational games. Educational games, just going to make up the chart here. Educational games actually was one of the least popular ones. Students actually across the board really were not crazy about educational games. Independent reading, well, this is a tough one, because we know that's heavily research-based, but kids weren't crazy about independent reading. But how about this one? Virtual learning, Google Classroom, virtual high school, or Khan Academy, right? We talk about learning in the future, digital learning, virtual learning, it's so great, right? Well, the kids don't think so. Not at all. They're like, "No, that is the worst." So this was a really interesting dataset, but let me point out, you can see it already, what do the kids like the most? Simulations, such as science labs, debates, real-world problem solving, right? That's like not, that's not like technology at all, right? That's like how I learned growing up, right? That's how we all learn, right? Actually, like really getting involved and digging in and like actually doing the work, right? The other thing was field trips and field experiences, okay, we can't go on field trips all the time, right? But student choice, studying a topic of their choice, these are all really encouraging things. And then what was really interesting is perceptions of technology. You know, we have a one-to-one program at the high school, which we're kind of reevaluating right now, because it costs us a lot, and it's good for kids, for sure, you'll see it's very positive. But there's a lot of kids who aren't, who don't have, who didn't say, like, there's a lot of evidence to believe that we should be reevaluating this. So for example, I learned more about technology at home than school. That was a pretty strong positive response, right? Additionally, I learned valuable technology in school, well, that was positive, and I prefer to, and adults use it in a fun way, the school Chromebook thing is a good thing, that's all good. But then, if you look at these other respondents, there's a lot of kids who aren't really crazy about having the Chromebooks, and a lot of kids say, "I would prefer to have my own device in schools." So we're going to explore that a little more. We also had room in the surveys for kids to provide open commentary, so we did an analysis of what they commented on, and it's pretty clear what was on the majority of their minds. So we're going to be taking a look at our homework practices over the course this year, because obviously homework can have some real benefit, but can also increase burnout in students, and really actually widen the achievement gap. And this is where they all got really interesting, is in this analysis of the students who identified themselves as struggling or below-average, when we did an analysis specifically just of these students, we found some very, very, very consistent responses, that these students really perceived very differently than the rest of the group. So this small percentage of students, somewhere in the ballpark of like 5% of kids, who are in our schools and throughout our schools, they had a very, very, very different experience of our schools than most of the respondents did. When they asked if they looked forward to coming to school every day, the average, students who consider themselves average, above-average, or excellent, it was 52% of them said they looked forward to coming to school. Only 17.7 of this below-average group, or this low confidence, let's call them the low-confidence group. The low-confidence group said only 17% of them looked forward to coming to school. Only, they were 18 percentage points less likely to have a strong friend base. Interestingly, their perception of bullying being a problem was negligible. So these kids aren't necessarily, they're not really, they're not being bullied in our school disproportionately, any more than any other kid is experiencing conflict in school. But when they say, but when asked if students celebrate their differences, 60% of the other students said, "Yes, we celebrate each other's differences." But only 40% of this group said that that was true. 20 more percent of them said they would usually feel burned out by school, 19 percentage points less had a career vision, and they were 22% less knew where to go for support. But here's what was really interesting, and this is one of those positive takeaways from all this, is that those same students, when asked about what kind of classes excite them the most, technology classes, and specifically in the survey, we broke this out to be more clear, STEM classes particularly, science labs and experiences like that, but particularly STEM, I'm sorry, not science labs, video production technology, STEM, and graphic design classes. They were disproportionately more excited by those classes. So they're having a less positive time than these other students, but they are more excited by these technical areas. That's a really, really interesting nugget to get out of that, especially as we're finishing construction on our STEM labs. Our MJS STEM lab just opened this year, it's a really exciting and vibrant space, and our high school STEM lab is going to be opening this early fall. So we're really excited about expanding those programs and using those as leverage points to bring these students who feel disenfranchised into loving school and feeling empowered again. So we're coming down to the end here. So basically, the short version in is, we have some great practices in place already that are really helping our students. We've got a great course of offerings, we've got great programs in place to help understand where kids are, and giving them, and how to help them, and techniques for how to help them, and ideas for more things that we can do to engage them and to help them when they struggle. And so we have some tentative goals in place, these are already morphing, we anticipate making our goals final at our next meeting, our next Board of Education meeting, but our goals really revolve around academic equity for all students, making sure that we're supporting all of our students. Student wellness, that's obviously a major concern, as we, of course, have seen just general student wellness across our nation declining, and as we become increasingly concerned about students feeling really well-supported in school. And then, we also have this category, which is changing a little bit, we called it student engagement here in the presentation, but really it's falling under this one, this idea of asking ourselves why we do what we do, and it's not just grading and assessment, but it's really all of our instructional and assignment practices. Why do we give the homework that we give? Why do we give the assignments that we give? When we score kids and we give them a grade, what does that grade mean? Because so much of school, we kind of fall back on traditionalism, right? Everybody kind of knows what school is like, because we all went to, we all went to school, most of us in this room went to school, many of us probably went to public school. And so, we were raised on a certain style of traditional grading and assessment, and that may work very, very well for some, but if we don't ask ourselves at the very least, even if we keep our traditional method and defend our original method, if we don't ask ourselves, "Why are we doing what we're doing? Why am I assigning as much homework as I'm assigning? Why am I choosing to give the assignments that I'm giving?" When you see that students benefit so much from critical thinking activities and technology-related activities, why are we not building a maximum amount of our curriculum about student-centered critical thinking interactions, as opposed to more traditional methods of just lecture and homework? Now, I'm not saying that's what we do in our schools by any stretch of the imagination. We've got tremendously awesome and innovative practices, but we want to make sure that we know why we're doing what we're doing with everything, so that way we are maximizing every potential to engage every child and to get them excited about becoming lifelong learners. So what can everybody do, is the last slide, but what can parents do to help our schools? First of all, promote our schools. If you're concerned about rankings, promote our schools. If you want to go online and leave positive ratings, by all means do. But additionally, partner with your child's school, I'm going to jump to the end. If you have concerns about your school, don't just go online and rant about it, make sure that you're actually coming to your school, and I'm not saying anybody here is, but the idea is that if you have concerns, reach out and share them with your school's principal, reach out to your teacher, and ask questions, be involved. Don't just get frustrated if there's something that's wrong. We're a human institution, and things are not always perfect, people make mistakes, people need feedback. And often, our teachers, they tend to get inundated by certain parents with feedback, and then a huge portion of parents just remain completely silent. Whether it's good feedback, whether it's constructive criticism, please deliver that feedback. Promote inclusiveness. This is a really important piece that we really need in our schools, and I think that we have a tremendous spirit of inclusiveness here in Madison. And the idea is that we are a community, and any community is only as strong as it is united, right? See, we've got Abraham Lincoln all over here, and standing for our union, and what a great metaphor that is for us here in Madison. The more that we rally together, and the more that we look out for everyone, and to the least that we have, as well as our highest achievers, and we bring our students together, and we support all of them, we really build our entire community. So talk to your kids about, and especially if your students and your children are the kinds of kids who are doing very well in school, if they're thriving in school, if they are really like moving in a great direction, what a better lesson to teach those individuals, we try and teach them, we try and teach all adults, that when you're well and you're thriving, then allocate some of your time and energy to help some of those who aren't. You know, in school, we all know what it's like to be in school, we all know what it's like to be a kid, I hope that all of us have had the experience at some point in time, the blessing at some point, to find ourselves as the kid on the outside, right? The kid who wasn't necessarily connected, and didn't necessarily have the best support group. If we teach all of our kids to support each other, and to reach out to each other, and care for each other, and be there for each other, then we certainly can have an increasingly, as time goes on, an increasingly inclusive community, increasingly supportive community, and a place where students all really like to come to school. And when students feel safe, and when they feel supported, they are absolutely going to be performing better and ready to learn. And then lastly, encourage your child's career ambitions. Every single one of our kids needs to have a vision for where they're going in their life. They need to know what they want, they need to know what they like. They don't need to know what they want to be, per se, we don't need to like, you know, crush the joy out of them by telling them they have to choose a job at this age, but they should be thinking about what they enjoy, and connecting their passions with a career path, and we need that for all of our students. So if you don't have those conversations regularly with your kids, please, by all means, do. And encourage those conversations among your students, among your kids, and among their friends when they're playing at your house. All of our kids need to have a vision for what they want for their life. That more or less concludes my presentation. There's not a clock in here. You guys might want to rethink that.
You were pretty close.
I don't know how far I did. How did I do?
You were a little over, but you did well. You were well within the margin of error, so we will give you a good grade.
Well, sincerely, I greatly appreciate the time. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to share the message of our schools. Again, just to recap, our schools are strong. Our students are doing extremely well, and they are only going to be doing better. We are expanding our course offerings. We are engaging the community. We are going to be engaging in many exciting new ways as the year goes on. We have a brand-new website that's going to be launched in the next couple of months. We actually... It's already developed. We're just in the process of vetting it and tweaking it and getting it exactly right. We're going to be having some... Looking into some... I'm pretty sold, but I still have to do some selling to the Board of Education on some software that I really like, that really is community outreach software that enables us to engage in dialogue in a virtual world. So, that way, people don't have to get out to board meetings all the time to actually join the conversation. So, there's a lot of great things going on in our schools. I'm looking to really create a new era here of cooperation. I appreciate greatly the borough's... The Borough Council's spirit, Mr. Connolly, and all the... Mr. Connley, excuse me, and all the energy that we put towards cooperation and working together. We've got a really exciting chapter in our community's history to be written very shortly. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you for... Thank you for your time. And as I said before, while these schools are separate from the purvey of the Borough Council, we're only as strong as everyone is in Madison, the schools, the municipal programs, and our residents. So, it is a great team effort. Any questions or comments from the council? Maureen? And then, John?
Well, I want to point out that in your top 50 schools, you left off Tufts, where two Madison students are studying biomedical engineering. I don't know either of them. Chromebooks. Now, that was a big expenditure, not only for the Chromebooks, but to expand our bandwidth to be able to accommodate them. Is the dissatisfaction with Chromebooks, the preference for using their own piece of equipment, iPad, MacBook, or whatever, is that across the grades, or is that only in the high school?
That's a great question. We're going to be cracking that specific data point open as we ask this question. But basically, our general feedback on this topic is that, you know, the one-to-one initiative was put in place to ensure that every student had access to a Chromebook. We had tried to bring your own-device policy. The problem with that policy is students walk into a class with a variety of devices, and any number of them can log on, and then you have technical difficulties with all these others. And now, we have our tech team trying to come into a lesson that can't start and trying to work with children's private devices, and that was really problematic. Technology's come a long way. People are more savvy about Wi-Fi today. So, it would stand... And I know there are many districts, very large districts, that actually, across the country, that use BYOD policies with a great level of success. So, we're going to be evaluating what those districts are doing, considering the changes in technology. Bandwidth will remain an issue, however, because if we open up our Wi-Fi network to student devices, we're certainly going to be having phones updated. They're going to be automatically using data all the time, just like our phones currently do on our cell services, with all of our apps that are constantly pulling data. So, our bandwidth use will absolutely spike if we go to a BYOD policy.
Okay. Two more questions.
Sure.
About the AP classes, I've been reading a lot that your top 50 schools are moving away from accepting AP credits. And I agree with that in that my daughter took AP Chemistry, got to Tufts, and freaked out because she thought... She knew nothing. So, I'm a little leery of AP classes. I think there's a space for them, for students who need that level of engagement. But I'd like to see... I'd like to see us moving away from selling them as a way of getting college credits out of the way. I would sell them as, "You should take this class so you get an A your freshman year." But I would not sell them as getting college credit, and the colleges seem to agree with me.
Yeah, we are aware of that. Now, they are nevertheless attractive for colleges. But to your point, in terms of making sure that students are aware of the fact that at the most competitive schools, you may very well likely not get credit for your AP classes. But again, that's not to say that the AP classes don't look strong. Now, to your point, and actually, to take it another step further, something that some school districts are doing around the country is that they are partnering with local universities to allow students to take college-level classes as part of their high school experience to simultaneously satisfy the high school experience and the high school credit and earn college credit. So, that's something that we've already kind of... We have some logistical challenges, but that's something that we're exploring, being especially that we have three universities within short range of our schools here.
And I wrote down characteristics, but unfortunately, my mind doesn't work as well anymore, so I'm not quite sure why I said characteristics. But I'm going to guess that I thought that that was something that we really should be focusing on in the schools, on, you know, dealing with the whole...
Whole child.
Dealing holistically.
Yes, absolutely.
With each child and with each student body.
Absolutely. And that's, again, our goals this year. One of them is on wellness, and the other... Another one is on equity. Particularly, the Wellness Initiative is on focusing on making sure that we're educating the whole child and supporting the whole child. I agree with you, sir.
We'll go to John. We'll try to wrap this up so we can get to our other topics.
First of all, I wanted to say thank you so very much for an excellent, excellent, comprehensive presentation. Really, really well done. Learned a lot, and it's very good. Thank you. This question or comment that I have may be and probably is out of context for this presentation. And if it is, then maybe you can come back and talk to us about it another time. I received a letter from our local Assemblyman on July 19th, and that letter said, "I am pleased to report passage of my cosponsored legislation, Assembly Bill 2, which modifies and modernizes the state school funding formula. Under the current formula, many school districts face an extraordinary burden. This new allocation puts the state on a path toward full funding of all schools, public schools, by fiscal 2025. As a result, the Madison Public Schools will receive a total of $1,523,524. That's an additional $391,094 over the current year that will begin stabilizing the tax burden of local residents. I am committed to ensuring the 27th Legislative District receives its equitable state aid." My question is, could you comment on the formula? Could you comment on the $391,094, which I understand what the Board of Education has decided to do is have full-day kindergarten? And what's the difference between $391,000 and $177,000 or $277,000, or wherever it is? And did you give a nod to the taxpayers at all to acknowledge that this could have been an impact on their tax burden?
Yes, actually. Thank you very much.
Again, if this is inappropriate placement, we'll talk about it another time, but...
Nope, that's no problem. I can give a quick commentary on that, certainly. And you know what? I am remiss that in my haste of trying to get to this presentation, that it didn't take a moment to thank the taxpayer. We do have on our website commentary that does thank the taxpayers in our meeting where we did actually... Where we voted to approve to defer those funds to the following school year to fund full-day kindergarten. We did make a commentary specifically and acknowledged the fact that one of the viable options for that money was for tax relief. We... Our school district, based on the existing funding formula, would have us funded, and I'm just shooting off the top of my head telling off the numbers in front of me, but it's in the ballpark of $2.4, $2.5 million state funding that we're supposed to be receiving. We had been receiving just over $1 million. The $391,000 is our total increase for this year, of which we already knew we were going to receive about $115,000. I think that... I'm pretty sure that's about where it's at. So, our net increase is in the ballpark of about $275,000, $274,000. So, from what we knew we were going to get earlier in the year. So, when we spoke about it as a Board of Education, we talked about a few options. The key things, we felt as though initiatives that would be worthy of using that money for the schools would be things that were particularly noteworthy, that would give a real impact to the community. So, we talked about security initiatives, which we know are concerns on everyone's mind, and those are initiatives that we are still going to attempt to fund. But with regard specifically to full-day kindergarten, particularly with the feedback that we've gotten from the community, feedback that the Board has gotten, and feedback that I've heard, and also the recommendation for our administrators, we do believe, and the evidence strongly suggests, that a full-day kindergarten arrangement provides more equitable education for students and really helps reduce achievement gaps in schools. So, we did feel... I did support a recommendation of the Board, which did indicate that those additional $274,000 would go towards full-day kindergarten. And I know, and that's something that I have a responsibility to make a recommendation regarding, but certainly, it was with feedback from the Board of Education. And actually, we went in with a blank resolution. That actually wasn't even written on the agenda as a resolution. It was written in. So, the point being that it was something that we spoke about in public, and we felt very strongly was met the goals and fit the picture of where we currently are, and that it was in the best interest of the students. And so, of course, the next... Shortly thereafter, it was the next day or the day after, we posted the message, and it's still on the website today, thanking the taxpayer and stating why we believe this is what is in the best interest of our students and our community.
Thank you. Oscar, and then Pat.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Okay, you've painted a great picture. A lot of things happening. We're just talking about all-day kindergarten. What are the major budget fiscal concerns you have for like the next five years to put this all together?
Thank you. So, health benefits are going to continue to be a concern. We migrated our entire staff's health benefits package away from the state plan, which was just having exorbitant rate increases, to a private plan. Now that we're in a private plan, our claims rates are really strong. So, we're actually going to be evaluating over the course of this year, going to a health insurance fund with other districts that have similarly strong rates and hopefully further driving down our claims. So, we moved to ETNA. We don't know what ETNA's increase is going to be going into the following year, but we're good on our current deal with ETNA through June 30th of this current year. So, that's going to be a concern and a cost driver. With this state increase of state aid, that dramatically helps out our concerns with regards to our goal to get full-day kindergarten. So, we will not have... By moving this money to next year, we anticipate that we'll have over half a million dollars to start full-day kindergarten. But then, to sustain full-day kindergarten, we're not going to have that level of funding for follow-up years. So, we need to be... So, sustaining full-day kindergarten will be a continuing concern. Sustaining our technology and our hardware and our one-to-one program will be a continuing concern as well. And then, the next big cost driver that I would say is our facilities. As you know, our buildings are quite old. If you've been around many of our schools, you know that we really, not only are in need of aesthetic improvements, but we have very real maintenance upgrades that need to be taken care of. And facilities costs, again, as the Borough knows well, are not cheap. So, we need to have a long-term strategic plan, specifically even just for facilities. But in terms of any immediate concerning needs, such as spiking enrollment, we don't have any immediate concerning drivers, issues, but rather, issues that we've known about in sustaining full-day kindergarten.
Thank you.
Well, actually, I had Pat in queue, and then Carmella.
I'm so sorry, Pat.
It's okay.
I had my black shirt on.
That's great. Thank you for the presentation. Actually, I had listened to half of it online, and then I realized I didn't have 45 minutes, so it was good to hear the rest filled in. And I would also note that although it was nice that Assemblyman McKee told us how much money the school district was getting, it is still less than we received, I think, in the '09, '10 budget. So, the district is still even not back where it was.
Yeah, we're still about a million dollars under.
When... And I really wasn't going to bring this up since John brought up the all-day kindergarten. When will you actually know what it is going to cost, both in terms of operating costs, any type of capital improvements that you have to do to make the buildings compliant with the regulations on kindergarten classes versus standard classes? And also, when you're going to have to factor in the loss of the revenue that you're getting from the wraparound program? When do you guys plan to do that? Because I did listen to the Board presentation about what you were going to do with the money, and I know that that was an open item that you have coming up at some point.
Yeah, so, we're going to formalize. We're going to create a kindergarten... Full-day kindergarten task force. Actually, we're discussing that as an administrative team today. And we have... We currently are operating where we have... We do collect tuition from KRAP, as you mentioned. Those funds have not been allocated towards operational funds. Rather, they've been deposited into an account to accrue for the purpose of eventually going to full-day kindergarten. So, we have about $1 million in revenues from that tuition to help out with facilities, with facilities work to be done, to make sure that we're compliant for full-day kindergarten. To the extent that we might not be fully compliant, the state does offer waivers if you have... You know, as long as you're close. And they're eager to give them, in my experience, having migrated to full-day kindergarten in another district because the state is behind full-day kindergarten, for the most part. And then, your other question was operating costs. We did an initial preliminary study, which is why we have basic figures. We did it... As part of a facilities evaluation that we did a year ago, about a little over a year ago, there was a commentary regarding feasibility for full-day kindergarten. And we will need to consider our room utilization, because our rooms are fairly maxed out. But we may have options in looking at our sectioning, to find some efficiencies in our sectioning, and as necessary, to be able to add space or retrofit space. So, the details of what that will actually look like going into next year are going to be fleshed out in this fall, so that way, they can be included in the budget process over the course of the winter. And in terms of the operating costs, as far as teachers are concerned, we're going to be in the ballpark of shy of about half a million dollars above what we currently pay right now for our... Again, I'm not speaking... I'm speaking off the cuff, but it's in the ballpark of a half a million dollars in salaries when you consider taking your... The additional teachers that we'll need to add. And we do have some KRAP teachers, so that'll offset some.
But they're currently not really being budgeted against your current general fund budget. They're being budgeted against the wraparound budget.
No, no, they are being budgeted by our general fund.
Oh, really, they are?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm speaking off the cuff here, and I don't have anyone from my business department to confirm for me. So, I don't... I'm actually... Please, let's strike that one for the record, because they're not fully funded by tuition. I know that. I can't tell you what percentage they are.
Right. I'd be surprised if they weren't. Anyway, the other thing I would offer is, you know, we're still looking at, and we will still be working through our affordable housing obligation over the next year, maybe more, depending on how things go. So, although, you know, you're currently showing the district flattening out or possibly slightly declining, you should put an asterisk there, because until we really come to a conclusion with the course in fair share housing, you know, in a likelihood, the district will probably be growing again at some point as a result of the building that's going to go on as a result of that.
So, the known building that we're aware of, we made known to our demographer. So, a portion of that is considered in this. So, unless... So, to the extent that there is affordable housing behind what I know, yes, I would agree with that. Thank you for that.
Carmella.
Oh, thank you. So, thank you, Mark, for coming.
Pleasure to be here.
We had the pleasure of meeting Mark at our first shared services committee that worked out very well. And we had some really great conversation, and most of the conversation was about how we can help each other. And the mayor is very committed, and so is the members of that committee, to continue with the shared services and to help each other. One of the things that we talked about at that point was school safety. So, what I'd like to do is, and I know you really didn't have time for this, because So, what I'd like to do is, and I know you really didn't have time for this, because this was important as well, is, with the mayor's permission, is to let you come back again and talk about school safety, and what you're doing in the schools to make them more safe. I think that's a very important issue for a lot of people, and I think it's something we need to get out to the entire, you know, all the residents, you know. So, because it's just not parents of schoolchildren that are involved in something like that, it affects an entire community, as we well know. So, you know, so, talk to this big boss over here and see if he'll let you come back.
Sounds great.
And we'll talk about it.
Sounds good. Yep, we will definitely. So, thank you all for questions.
Thank you all so much for your time.
And, Mark, thank you for taking the time presented. I think it was very helpful.
My pleasure to be here. I'm sorry, it took a little while. I'm more passionate about it, so.
But important topic. Thank you. Road reconstruction update.
Road park first, so they can.
Sounds good. We will shuffle things a little bit, and go with the dog park, and then we'll wrap up the agenda discussions with road reconstruction.
This is a test.
When does he hear paying attention?
Thank you, Mark. I need John.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
Could you be, you go to the Parks Committee?
No, give them that. Let them have it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You take it.
So, we've got, John, welcome. We can do a little introduction of how you got involved, and then go to your presentation.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time to be able to come up and speak with you all. This is a second-generational effort to get up here. I know a lot of you know my mother, Judith Mullins. So, I've been on the Madison Parks Committee for a number of years now. I've got a pretty enthusiastic crew behind me, and we have been extremely energetic, trying to find ourselves a spot in town to put a dog park. We've got a number of people here who just learned a lot more about the school than, I think, a lot of us were expecting. I think by a show of hands, I'd like to ask to see who are the supporters of the dog park that have come here tonight?
We try to avoid the polling, so, sorry, John. We can just stay.
I'm good with the pulpit right here, but I think the early shot to be able to come up and voice an opinion to say, hey, we're in favor. I think a lot of us missed it, and, well, you learned a lot about the schools, so. Well, the locations that we've looked at have been pretty exhaustive. As I mentioned, I am part of the Parks Committee, so we have looked at every single park in town. We've looked at the MRC, we've looked at pretty much every spot that we could find to be able to get a viable location in town for the dogs. Tom Solaki and Councilwoman Vitale have been very helpful for us, and they actually, Tom actually put together this opening slide that we have here. As you can see, this is the location behind the new shed that the Parks Committee managed to put together for the Memorial Park. And this is the section where we've got a picnic area that is right adjacent to the community pool parking area. This section, I live across the street from it, it's very underutilized, it is one of the best parks in our town, and it is the area where everybody basically walks their dogs now. So, I'm a dog owner, everybody here that is supporting, for the most part, is a dog owner. One of the more uncomfortable situations is when you're walking your own dog, and there's a dog that's running off-leash and comes running straight up to you. So, it can be a very uncomfortable situation. We don't have anywhere in town where our dogs can actually run, be free, be able to interact with each other, and be in a safe situation. So, we've got Rosedale Avenue is right here, very busy street in the mornings. Mornings and early evenings are the best times that most people will be walking their dogs. Heat of the day is a very difficult time for us to be able to do so. So, what I'm going to do a quick flash to, so this is what the proposal would look like as far as a rendering. We would be looking for a six-foot metal gate, so it's going to be chain link, posts going into the ground. The section of this that we are, it worked good. There's a section here where this is in the wetlands buffer zone, so that has been our biggest concern, and we had to go through the letter of interpretation with the town. It had expired. We have been doing this since 2014. We've been through Bottle Hill Day in '14 and '15. We've got almost 600 signatures of support from people in town. If we want to go for length with the school board, we can read all the names.
That's all right.
So, it's a six-foot chain link fence. We've been advised that black chain link is going to be the least observable from the roads. This is the section in the park that is the furthest away from any of the houses in town, so it's going to be the least obtrusive to any of the area's residents. And being, I believe, the closest resident to it, I think the closest one's going to be in favor of the dog park. Quick highlights here, the committee who's behind me, we said that we are here to establish a fence to off-leash dog park in Madison, where responsible owners and their well-behaved dogs can exercise and socialize in a clean and safe environment without endangering or disturbing people, property, and wildlife. So, we've heard many people in town say, the dogs have run, and when they're off-leash, they're going to go to the bathroom wherever they want. It's harder to pick up after your dog if they're off-leash inside the park, it's a lot more controlled, it's a lot cleaner, it's a lot more, it's based a lot better for the area. So, this section has been identified as the most beneficial, because it's already popular with our dog owners. It's identified as a naturally clear, mature shade tree section. We've seen Florham Park's dog park, Greystones, Morris Towns, a lot of other dog parks in the area, they're beautiful, but they're fully exposed to the sun, similar to our MRC. You just can't get shade. Having a dog out there, being out there with them with no shade, the dogs overheat, you overheat, so having this area is outstanding, because the dogs are able to run, you can get in there at longer periods of time and exercise. It's just a much more hospitable area for us to be able to run our dogs. There is an existing water line already in there. The site has virtually no undergrowth, it's just pure mature shade trees. Adding a dog park here is literally just putting in fence posts and possibly burying a line. It's minimal disturbance inside of the letter of interpretation area. We have the ability to do very minor disturbance to the ground with no concerns. So, at least little concerns, I should say. Eco Sciences have performed, Bob Vogel and I have had some extensive conversations, and these are just questions that we're going to ask Eco Science to find out what the impact would be. So, adding the dog park would, adding the dog park will mitigate the current issue of the rearranging dogs, as we discussed momentarily ago. We do have some opposition, which is our adjacent use, which is the community pool. So, there's a parking lot there. Use timing is very overlappingly friendly for us. Dogs are usually walked first thing in the morning, or later in the evening, the park is open to everybody, the pool doesn't open until noon. So, parking is not an issue as far as that is concerned. I'm going to flip back to, flip forward to one section. I have no idea how this pointer works, but we'll figure something out. Pardon? Okay. So, this is the parking lot right here for the pool. We have got two lines right here. This section right here is what we'll be projecting to be the entry point for the dog park. We have purposely made this to be the furthest section away from the parking lot. So, again, parking lot up here, this is our dog entry gate right here. The hash mark right here is the edge, I'm going to back to the other side of the slide. Right along this section here is where the wetland buffer zone section is. This gate portion here, which would be the only piece that we're expecting, will require any strength and support, will require concrete that is specifically designated to be outside of the buffer zone. This was our original gate. The blue line right here is the wetland buffer zone line. This is the actual wetland zone here, which is the pink. This section here is the main park that we had originally proposed. This section here is already cleared, however, it is in the wetland zone. So, we have backed our scale down to this. This is a section I had mentioned right here. So, it's roughly a half an acre of area for the dogs to be able to run. It is an ideal section. Again, we have good parking, we've got great visibility for it, it's away from all of the different homes. There is a tremendous amount of support from everybody in town to be able to find a place to put their dogs, and we have a senior community that has dogs, they're either support dogs, they're just companions, they don't have the ability to run them. They can walk them on a leash, they can't keep up with the dogs. This is an area where our seniors can let the dogs go out and run. So, I'm happy to take any questions on this. I'm sure there's plenty that I've left off, I'm not the public speaker, but.
Thank you, John. You did a great job. Carmella, you want to start, and then?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments. The Parks Committee sat, and there were a few considerations, one of them, which was the wetlands. So, you know, a great thought went into it, well, let's just move the fence. And that eliminated the problem. There seems to be a lot of consideration given to that small parking lot, that the pool now utilizes, and was concerned that, you know, people would be parking in there. But the consideration was made, well, we can just put a sign up that says, "From May until September, when the pool closes, they would have use of that parking lot." And then, whoever afterwards, and I'm sure that's what probably happens anyway, is that, you know, anybody could use it. Moving the gate towards the municipal, towards Memorial Field parking lot makes a big difference, because people would be able to park in there as well. As John said, one of the great things about this is that we're not going to cut down any trees. One of the examples that we had, were given as a possible solution was just loaded with absolute, you know, I would say probably about 100 trees would have to come down at that point, which was off of Rosedale. So, we don't want to do that. So, they, you know, the Parks Committee made, I think, some really good compromises, and, you know, we're hoping that, you know, I think that this council is pretty much committed to understanding, you know, all the residents of Madison. You know, later on, we're going to pass, you know, an ordinance regarding giving some money to Little League to help them with recreation. Well, there are people who just enjoy this kind of situation, and I think that is what we have to understand. There's a community out there, and it's varied, and we have to give as much help to the varied community. This is not a big town, and there isn't much land left. So, a little half-acre, I think, of bringing enjoyment, and we'll police it. You know, I think, you know, Paul will probably be out there looking at everything, making sure everything is clean and whatever. So, I'm happy that we came to all of these compromises, and I'm hoping that we can finally, after four years, put this to rest.
We are grateful as well.
And I think it's important that people know that you have the money for the fence, so it's not costing anybody any money. You've gotten that through donations and whatever, right?
It's not 100% yet.
Yeah, okay.
We're hoping to be able to lean to open spaces as well, and find other options.
Right. Well, here's the open space lady, you can start it right now.
It's on the list.
So, I'll tell you another piece that, you know, I personally find commercial real estate for a living, and a lot of the areas in Jersey City, Hoboken, which are really your second location out of the home on your first jobs, and you move back into the suburbs, dog parks are extremely social areas where a lot of the communities connect. When people are moving from the Jersey City and Hobokans, and they're coming to the suburbs, they're looking for areas that have dog parks. So, it can be a benefit from home values, from attractiveness of our city, so it's a great attitude.
Oscar, and then Pat?
This may be a question for Bob Vogel. You're not in the wetlands, but you have encroached on the buffer.
Correct.
So, will that require further DEP permitting?
He's back there.
My expectation is that it's not, as long as we don't do significant disturbance. I'll give you the floor on that one.
I think it's worth a pre-application meeting with you.
So, Bob Vogel's answer was, it would, we would need to have a pre-application meeting with DEP, just to clarify, is that correct, Bob?
That's true.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
From our initial meeting, I've got a comment is right up here. If we do penetrate into the wetlands area and actually use the entire space that is early cleared and hard-packed, then if it's substantially disturbed, it's a three-to-one exchange. If it, let's see, I don't know where my own notes are, but if it is actually in the buffer zone, it's a one-to-one exchange if it's substantially disturbed. And that's according to the DEP. Bob and I have had conversations, and on the east side, it was the east side of Memorial Park in that area, we do have elevated areas where there could be an exchange of land.
But the only disturbance right now that's being planned are fence posts.
Correct.
Just the one, right?
My understanding is that as long as you're not putting cement into it, and you just pound them into the ground, you're okay with it.
Right, so the gate is really the only potential disturbance which you pushed
Outside of.
Outside the area, so we should be fine. Okay.
And the main thing that we would need the big gate for are going to be clearing leaves is really the biggest thing.
Yep. And to reaffirm what Bob said, but we just need to confirm all of that with the DEP, because we, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oscar, anything else?
No.
Okay, Pat?
So, one question for you, John. I know when I was sitting on the Parks Committee, and this was being discussed while we were waiting for the letter of interpretation to come in, they had talked about dividing whatever park they had into two sections, one for larger dogs, one for smaller dogs. I'm assuming there's not enough space here to do that?
You know, it's a little bit constricted, but it's still, it's an option that we can consider.
Okay.
Now, we came in to try and get the general concept of the dog park first. If there's a way to separate it, we'd love to figure that out.
Okay. And then, the other question is for Matt, is if we put one of these parks in, do we take on the additional liability of the things that happen inside? I mean, if someone's walking down the street with their dog, and they have an issue, that's more of a person's, I guess, homeowner's insurance, but if we put in a defined dog park, and a child gets bit or something inside, do we then own that issue?
It's no different if you had a playground. All, in the different towns that I represent, they've installed dog parks, and all the insurance carriers do permit them. It's an additional, it's not an additional premium, there are certain signs that have to be warned, if it's not a friendly dog, they have to be leashed, et cetera.
Okay.
So, you do have the normal warning signs, but it's not atypical to have, and I don't think the liability is great. It's probably more contained when you're in an area like that, so the kids don't go into it, if you do have dogs in there.
You have a, another, pardon me, another section of the presentation, which is substantially longer with signs, recognition of ordinances, insurance, and all of the issues that we researched earlier.
Could we get copies of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Maureen?
I'm seeing they have signs up, and it's, it looks beautiful. I have a very small dog, I probably won't be there, but.
There's not that much vegetation, you won't lose them.
Okay.
That's what she's worried about.
How are you going to enforce the rules? How, for example, dogs are running around, and my dog is running around, and I'm also talking to Kathy, whose dog is running around, and our dogs do what dogs do, and we don't notice that, so we don't pick it up. So, who's going to, who's going to clean the area? And secondly, who's going to enforce what dogs can be in there? Because there are dogs, I had one, that are not compatible with other dogs. And, you know, how are you, how are you going, how are you going to decide who gets to use the dog park, and who has to walk on the sidewalk?
There's, there's a social conscience that comes with dog ownership as well, where if you're in there solo, anybody walking solo, if nobody's watching you, you may just leave your dog's feces behind.
Mm-hmm.
If you're there with somebody else, social conscience will keep you getting active, picking it up.
And you'll have bags on site for people to use?
Correct. So, garbage cans there for immediate pickup and standard pieces, but right now, people walking their dogs are required to pick up after their dogs.
Right.
So, there's actually a sign at Memorial Park right now, for littering, it's $500. Sorry, for littering, it's $100. If you don't pick up after your dog, it's $500. So, you can pick up after your dog and leave the bag there, and it's cheaper. So.
But one of the advantages of the fact that we're not doing a first dog park is we can let lessons learn from many other parks that are out there, as far as how enforcement goes, what the challenges may have been, and how they address them.
Correct. So, we've already anticipated that aggressive dogs, children under 12 years old, I mean, there's a lot of it is going to come down to common sense. If your dog's extremely aggressive with other dogs, you're likely not going to bring your dog down there.
Right.
And there's a point where, when somebody owns a dog, and they see another dog, you're going to walk up, and most people talk to each other, is your dog aggressive, male or female? So, there's a lot of different rules that we've been looking into, that will be on a sign that will seal it. Read the sign, know if you're capable and if you're appropriate to bring your dog into the park.
And what's, what's the limit for the number of dogs that can be in the dog park at any time?
There is none.
That's a question we never answered, never asked. That's a question we never answered, never asked. As long as they're all getting along, it doesn't bother me.
So, there's no, like, critical mass?
I don't know the answer to that, but I look forward to finding it out.
John?
Yeah, thank you very much again for the presentation. Very well put together. I'm sorry it's taking so long to get this thing done, but I just need to let you know that we council people are liaisons to several boards, commissions, committees and independent groups. I happen to be the liaison to the community pool.
Yes, sir.
And one of the things I might suggest, and I don't know what your next steps are, but one of the things I might suggest is that because you've redone this so well, that you perhaps arrange to sit down with, you know, Captain Nun and the board of directors of the pool and maybe talk it through again with them.
We're happy to do that.
Because from my, from my perspective, what I'd like to see is a complete, solid resolution of whatever differences there may be, so that we're all peaceful and working together. So, if you would agree...
This will be our second time sitting with the board.
Yeah.
And the first time we did do it, there was such a resistance to us.
Yeah.
There wasn't even a consideration. So, we've actually are able to see here, these are actually the topographical lines of which way the water's going to flow. They're accusing that we would have fecal issues going that direction and meanwhile, we're down here and everything flows this way.
Yeah.
The parking was the biggest concern. I understand that. We don't use the pool at the same time that we're using the dog park.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the overlaps are there. Unfortunately, the opinion was very strong. I'm happy to sit down with them.
I think, I think it would be a good idea and I think we'd like to avoid a Hatfields and McCoy kind of a thing, you know, so that we all get along and we're all cooperating and enjoying what this town has to offer.
Agreed. And more importantly...
I've already, by the way, I already communicated with Captain Nun about that today. I suggested that that happen.
Thank you.
So...
The other side of this that we're very strong about, this is an annual project. The pool, we've looked at the calendar, they're open for about 90 days a year, from noon to about seven.
Right.
This is, we'll be able to support the community for the entire year.
I don't disagree with anything you've said tonight. Believe me, I don't, so...
So, just to, and I will go on record, I am not a dog person, so a lot of this is novel to me and I will be there to watch from outside the fence, but, but just to be clear, so this is basically just a fenced area. There's no, there's not going to be any ladders or jumps or, I don't, I don't know what I'm talking about.
Just lay on the ground. It's nothing that's going to be firmly...
Nothing, but there might be some temporary things that are put in there. Yep, so, okay. And the, it is a nice little grove there, so that stays intact and as you said, is a nice sight because of the shade and the combination. And to John's point, you know, we balance the concerns, just like whether it's this or the neighborhood, we balance the concerns of everyone and address issues that are truly issues and, you know, that the parking is very important to them and I think the location of the gate encourages people to use the rink. And if, just like anything else, if issues come up that dog owners abuse it during the summertime, we address the few that abuse it, so the, those that would enjoy it aren't punished in the long run. So, our next steps, we'll be working with DEP to clarify any other issues that may be a surprise, work it through open space as far as the support funding and I know Parks is behind it, but a, you know, a formal resolution from Parks that this is the plan and that, those of us have been here for a while, we know this has been well researched and we have looked at, you've looked at all four square miles of this town and this site works very well.
It does.
All right. Thank you very much and thank you for your patience and your education on the education of our students that you got tonight that you might not have been counting on, John. So, thank you for your work and...
Thank you, everybody.
And now we'll shift to roads with sidewalks sometimes, where dogs are walked.
Dogs are walked. Oh, my God. So lame. That was so lame.
He's going to click for it.
Aren't you going to click for it?
So, just to tee this up, obviously, for those that haven't noticed, there's a lot going on in town. And if you haven't noticed, I'm not too sure where you've been, but there has been a lot going on in town on the road. So, Carmella is liaison to Public Works and Engineering is going to give us an update.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I want to do is I want to bring Bob Vogel up here because I have to tell you very honestly, this is a man who has been working with Frank Russo and Danny Buckeloo to get all of this done. As you know, the budget process ended in April and we designated for, in the five-year capital improvement plan, $1,800,000 for the road reconstruction. And then there was another $705,000 for milling and overlay. As the mayor mentioned, we've seen a lot of stuff happening in Madison. It's created learning new streets, I think, for a lot of people because people got to a point that they would just go directly down one street and not know that something else was, was there. But the first, Michael, the first one is, this is a map and it shows the, the brown is all the borough projects, PSE and G projects and the county projects. So, we, you know, with the combination, that kind of gives you an idea. Now, this will be on RoseNet, so you could take a look at it a little bit better. The road reconstruction, reconstruction with Central Avenue sidewalks, Crestwood, Greenwood Avenue, Kensington Plain and Rosewood Drive. I think the greatest part about that is, one of the things that Bob and his people did this year is they went out and they bid out very early, which meant that we could get the people out here to do this work on an earlier schedule and it's helped a lot. So, you have Central Avenue sidewalks that are done, Crestwood Drive is done, Greenwood Avenue is still in the process for Main Street and Rosedale. Kensington is done. Plain Street, Water Main is just being done and then milling and overlay and Rosewood. So, on these next kind of photos, you'll be able to see what the Central Avenue sidewalks look like. I think Sefeli did these, am I right? Yeah, he did a great job. On Greenwood Avenue, what we're doing is, this is all traffic calming. There's going to be some bump outs and hopefully in some of the areas, especially near Dodge Field, where there seems to be a lot of accidents and whatever, that this traffic calming is going to be helpful. The next one is just what happened to Kensington with the drainage improvements. That, that particular street really had some major problems with drainage. So, and this is what it looks like. Totally awesome. Totally awesome. And that's, I just realized, whose house that was? Ray Cody's house. He probably is not, he doesn't have to worry about the ice on the end of his driveway anymore because we have new drainage, right?
Home escape, car, all of it.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. One of the biggest problems at the end of that driveway, and I remember it very well, is that the water would pool and then it ices. Plain Street is in the midst of being done right now. There's a new water main going in there, so that'll be milled and overlaid as well. Crestwood Drive has been, has been done. That's what it looked like. And I think we have, we have, yeah, this is, just the striping is needed on that particular street right now. So, there's been some good work. This is Rosewood. Bob has done some curb and drainage work, which has really been important in that particular area. So, that should help probably with the water coming down onto Park Avenue as well, wouldn't you think, Bob? That's what the tack coating looks like just prior to the milling and the overlay. And this is what those two streets look like. So, when you look at something like that completed, you know, you realize that a lot of water issues are going to be eliminated, as well as the roads are going to be looking a lot better. So, the milling and the overlay that was done this year is Barnesdale. Elmer Street is still in the process, of course, and Keep Street, Kings Road, it'll be from Madison Avenue to Green Village Road. I think one of the most important things is, is that that, that particular area was, that was part of the GVR project and they took care of that. We will be doing Green Village Road to the Prospect Street eventually. That's kind of pending and Winding Way was also finished. On Elmer Street, that's what is absolutely necessary there. That has been a major problem for lots of years. One of the problems that it ended up at was right on the corner of Central and Elmer and whatever, there was, in front of Firehouse Apartments, there was a lot of drainage problems. So, this is going to be eliminated. So, that's what it looks like right now. PSE has decided in the midst of everything is to come in and start working on that. So, now, the milling and the paving has to be held up because PSE and G will be working on there and uprooting the road again. So, that's what that looks like. Okay. This is Keep Street. Keep Street was, was just done, looks very good. The milling and the paving, Winding Way was completed. This is what Kings Road, if you remember when they were doing that, the new development up there, Kings Road really became kind of nasty, actually. And, but the GVR developer actually paid for that section of Madison Avenue to Green Village Road. So, that's all striped and it's ready for parking and it looks really, really good. Looking forward to seeing the rest of that done down to Prospect. Crack sealing projects, you know, there are, you know, there's a total of 13,600 feet, which is like 2.6 miles of crack sealing that DPW is probably going to be doing. Are we having anybody else do that for us? It's just, just...
It's all completely...
Yeah, it's all gone, yep. So, there's been a lot done. This is Pomeroy after it was completed. Let's see, I'm going to move through this quickly because I think people have heard enough tonight. But I think one of the most important things that we have to remember is that what, what has happened to us is in the midst of all of our projects that we were considering is that PSE and G came in with their, their gas main and line projects. So, we can't finish Central Avenue basically until PSE and G gets in there and they finish theirs. Then the, the county has to come in and they will be milling and paving. I think that what Bob told us, it'd probably be done about September the 11th. A little unfortunate because it's a little bit later than we expected because of the school, because of Madison High. But PSE and G is doing the gas main and line projects and it's kind of important that they get it done. They're also still, they're also working on Greenwood Avenue. So, as you can see from the, the list, they did quite a few, they did quite a few streets in Madison and, you know, at this point. I think there's just a real fast view of Crestview and, and Green Avenue and whatever. Take a look at the one on Green Avenue. One of the things that happened is that we, we did Green Avenue, was it last year, two years ago? And it cost us a lot of money to do that road. And public service came along and started digging it up. Now, they are only required to pave over the areas that, that they dig up. We have just passed an ordinance that states that if a road is done within the past five years, that they have to pave curb to curb because what happens is it's created a little bump in the road and God only knows if it's, you know, what's going to happen to it. So, it was, it was a great effort on the part of this council is to make sure that, you know, that they will pave curb to curb instead of just, you know, certain sections of it. Let's see, what else was there? Main Street and Madison Avenue was completed by them and, you know, if you take a look, you'll, you'll find, you know, some of the same situation along Main Street in Madison where they only did a portion of the paving. The county projects that we have right now are basically on Central Avenue because the county is responsible for part of that, that road. So, they're doing catch basins, handicap accessible curbing at the intersection and they're paving curb to curb from Main Street to Ridgedale Avenue. So, like I said, that'll probably be like September the 11th. So, you know, we want to thank everybody for their patience. You know, I think that it was, it's a very strong commitment from this council that we work very diligently on our infrastructure and I think this year really has proved that we are, we are committed to it. I mean, we have a lot more to go in the next, Bob has done a five-year plan that's pretty aggressive next year as well. But, you know, we've, we've heard people be concerned about not being able to get up and down roads, but, you know, this winter, it's going to be absolutely great when we have, you know, the proper drainage and, and paving and whatever. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions.
I just want to emphasize one thing that might be missed in your great report is, maybe the first time in my memory, is the fact that all our major east-west and north-south roads will be in good to excellent condition by the end of all these projects. East-west, we're talking woodland, which is now done. Kings Road, which, when we finish this section, will be done with the help of the state. Main Street, Madison Avenue is in good to excellent condition, especially after PSE and G did their repairs there. Ridgedale has been done. Central Avenue, not just the fact that it is a county road, but coordinating with the county. So, as they get done, it's going to have, has brand-new water mains underneath there. So, we're, we've taken care of what's buried. The Green Avenue, the central Green Avenue corridor, we took care of Green Avenue. The Prospect-Greenwood, north-south, will be taken care of. Phase two Greenwood, which is from Fairview to the...
Florham Park.
Florham Park line will be next year and of course, Rosedale. So, that is very impressive and we, that was all done without forgetting about the neighborhood streets, Rosewood, Crestwood and so on. So, a very impressive amount of work by our engineering team, by coordinating, designing and working our own projects, but coordinating with the state and county for the other projects and a commitment from this borough to reinvest so we can get from point A to point B. And also on top of that is a commitment to traffic calming as we do these things. So, when we do a road, we have our complete streets. It's not just for cars, it is for pedestrians and bicyclists and anyone else, and dogs.
And scooters. Bob, did you, did you, you want to add anything to what, what I said or showed?
I think you covered pretty much everything, Caroline. One of the great things about a successful road program, I think, is a, is a, is a really good council liaison. liaison. For two years in a row, you've been absolutely fantastic. So I appreciate you putting all that time and energy into the report, and you're dead on. Let's keep it going. I think, I'm sorry to the public in a lot of ways because so much has let loose this year. There's a lot of things in play. It's a little bit inconvenient. I completely understand. But by the end of September, you know, our goal is to have it all sorted up and, as the mayor said, have a really nice set of looking roads in town that we can be proud of, and obviously, that's our goal. Thank you.
Patton and Maureen?
Along the lines of communication, I think the one thing that would have been helpful this year, we do get notices sometimes when things are getting paved like Crestwood, Rosewood. But a couple weeks ago, maybe a week and a half ago, I got a friend a call from my wife who was trying to get across town and couldn't find a way. And I said, you know, I hadn't gotten any NICSOL alerts. On a day like that where you have so much work going on, it would be really helpful for the, I think it's mainly the police sending out an alert saying, you know, "All the following roads are getting major construction. Good luck getting across town." But it was kind of interesting.
Yeah. In answer to that, though, Michael makes a daily phone call to the police department to find out what they're doing, and he sends out a NICSOL and then he puts it on RoseNet and whatever. So we're getting better at that, I think, as long as the police let him know what is going on.
Traffic safety coordination.
Yeah.
And PSENG has, at times, has secured the police and said, "Well, instead of this block, we're gonna move down two blocks." And so that's been another challenge and the surprises. Maureen? I'm sorry, Patton, you're still...
So two other questions. One is related to this year. Central runs right in front of Central Ave. School. Are we coordinating that with the school district in a way that would hopefully avoid a day that school's in session? I know you mentioned the 11th. I think that's Jewish holiday.
Today, I get a commitment from the county on a paved day. We'll be over there talking to them.
Okay. And then the last question is, you know, with PSENG, I went through that as well. Next year, we have Glenwell coming up, which is another significant road. Have we communicated to them that if they have any plans to do work while we're doing work, they need to get it all done during the summer so that we get the road buttoned up before kids go back to school? Because that road would be a giant disaster to close on a school day.
Our communication and writing with public service has been consistent and long-term.
I know.
They have everything on our plan laid out for them, like most, I don't believe any other municipality does, thorough job communicating in writing to public service. What we get, what we get stuck doing quite often is making sure that the hammer hits the gavel and people jump down there when they know that we're in construction. And it's unfortunate that a lot of people don't react until those heavy vehicles are on the road. But in that regard, public service is no different. Sometimes they need a shot across the bow to get the ball rolling.
I think that's the one place that where we really need to point out to them, like, this road is a significant issue for us. And so please, you know, like right now, start thinking about, if you're gonna do it, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do it next summer, and we'd like you to coordinate it. Otherwise, you know, you're not gonna be able to do it for five years.
Ray's been great about getting meetings with them every three, six months.
Okay. Thank you.
Maureen?
Well, I can't drive anymore, so I'm... I am dependent on the Madison community to get me where I need to get to. And I'll tell you, the last couple of weeks, it's been really interesting. I've seen a lot of streets I didn't know existed. I've discovered that Madison is actually a lot bigger than I thought it was. My question is, we've been at this for, what, three years? This road reconstruction project. How many years have we...
Yeah, it's been, it's been more aggressive in the...
Right. When, or do we ever, when do we get out of the aggressive phase and move into the maintenance phase? Or is it just because of the way the roads get used, we will never be in a maintenance position?
Not at all. I think what you're seeing is our major roads have all been affected somewhat simultaneously. So you have Main Street, you have Greenwood Avenue, you have Central Avenue. Those are major arterials throughout the town, and they're all being affected at the same time by public service and by the borough. And we are trying to cooperate with each other as much as possible to get those done. We will get them done. But you're seeing quite a bit of road mileage this year because of those major roads. We're doing significant portions of them. There's gonna be other years where little local roads, like Winding Way, like Kensington Road, that are out of the way and don't really affect people's circulation through town. We're gonna have years like that, that we just do those side roads instead of major roads. And when that happens, you'll be much happier.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you for the report. All right, moving on to ordinance or hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed in the first reading at the regular meeting of the council, held on Monday, July the 23rd, 2018. They were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinance 43-2018 for second reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the, ordinance 43-2018, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating thirty-two thousand dollars from the municipal open space trust fund for improvements at Borough baseball fields.
I open the hearing for ordinance 43. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 43-2018.
A second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 43-2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice of a newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 44-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars from the municipal open space trust fund as matching funds for an accessible trail at the Madison Recreation Complex.
Open hearing for ordinance 44. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 44-2018.
A second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 44-2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. And now we're on to the second invitations for discussion. This is when you may comment on any topic. Again, please, as you step up, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and try to keep your comments three minutes or less, but I'll give you a one-minute grace period and ask you to stop at four minutes.
Deb Cohen for Hoyt Street. Very excited about sidewalks on Central Avenue. It's very nice as a walker and that sort of thing, and all the construction, yes, we've seen new streets, but we've also been able to work around it. My concern is the September 11th date. I have kids that walk a mile and a half to the junior school. They go down Central, go across Britton, cross Greenwood. A kid that walks to the high school, granted, that's a lot shorter from Hoyt Street. But I know even in the spring, I would get calls from my kids, "I'm getting home eventually, Mom, I'm okay, but try and get around the construction." Obviously, it can't be stopped because school is starting or slowing down, but I don't know if there's something that can be done. Those, school starts the 4th, it's a week and a half. There is school on the 11th, the 10th, the schools are closed for Rosh Hashanah, and then they're closed the following...
Who's the...
I'm trying to do the math in my head. So I don't know if paving can be done, but I'm just concerned, we're trying to encourage all these kids to walk and bike, and Central Avenue is kind of a mess right now, and those kids that are walking both to Central Avenue and the junior school and on Greenwood, I'm sure it's the same thing. I'm just a little concerned that with, you know, a week and a half, communication to me is the key. It's been really good through Face, I get it all through Facebook, I'm not getting a lot of NICSOLs. But maybe making sure people are aware that this will be happening once school goes and to, you know, plan accordingly for those first two weeks of school would be a good thing, a good faith. You know, get the schools to send it out through their Genesis portal with the start of school packet that we all get next week. Hey, heads up, this is going on.
Thank you. I think Bob captured all that, and we can learn from others. And as we recognize, the challenges that New Jersey Transit is facing with shortage of engineers and the lack of investment for many years, one of the things that frustrated people mostly is the lack of communication. And so we will communicate the best possible. The good news is, the worst of it, which is digging in the roads with gas lines and putting in curbs, is, will be behind us for the school year, and milling and overlay is more straightforward, but we'll need to coordinate that with the schools and communicate. So thank you for that reminder. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to the introductory ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for Wednesday, September the 12th, 2018, will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copy.
I call up ordinance 45-2018 for first reading, and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 45-2018, ordinance of the Borough of Madison mandating direct deposit for compensation for municipal employees of the Borough of Madison effective January 1st, 2019 pursuant to NJSA 52:14-15F.
Mayor, I move ordinance 45-2018.
A second.
Any council discussion?
One quick question, Jim, how do people still get a paycheck?
Less than 10%.
Okay. Thank you.
And the NJSA was a clarification, allowed towns to require direct deposit, and as most of us probably do in our paying jobs, it's required in the real world to...
And as the, and as it states, the, if employees really have a hardship, they can apply for relief from that. So everything's taken care of, as far as I'm concerned.
Yep, good point to share. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be acted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolutions R. 226 through 236-2018.
A second.
Any council discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher roster? Register.
Byrne Fund, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars, seventy-two cents.
Yes, Lee.
I have this printing a little larger, this thing. General Capital Fund is three hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Electric Operating Fund, two hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty cents. Electric Capital Fund, three thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents? Is that it? Yeah, it's bad. Water Capital Fund, my goodness.
Do you want me to have a read on this?
Okay, Water Capital...
Or the Water Capital.
I gotta go to Water Operating. I think you missed Water Operating. Water Operating, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-three cents. Water Capital, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-one cents. Trusts, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Total, one million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-one cents.
I move the bill list.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
There is no new business short of introducing ordinances for larger font, but so, it's that.
I, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, God, he's on.
We spent ten cents more here and five cents.
Oh, my God, cancel.
Okay, that was done. Good job.
We can make this big.
Three o'clock. Got it.
When are you going?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes, tomorrow.